The planning board meeting on Tuesday, June 16th will come to order at 7:00. We don't have any items that are being postponed on the agenda?
No.
They're all on? Okay, so the first thing we will do is the lot release for Salem Street, 166, 170, 180. What do we have here?
I don't know if Mr. Cahill was going to present or not. This situation, the applicants requesting release of two lots for development, the conditions of the decision have been met. The engineer Phil Christensen provided a certificate letter and an ASBIL plan of the roadway.
Well, this is, this one was, we waived the construction of the roadway. So this project, are you familiar with where it is in Salem Street?
Yeah.
That was one, it's, it's three lots, right? It's only three lots altogether.
Correct. One you've already released, 166, the Berry Homestead.
Well, yeah, because somebody lives there, so. So what we did is a condition of them going from originally, they wanted to build four lots, we said, "Build two extra lots," and that we waived construction of the roadway. What I want to make sure is that there's no site opening bond, anything, because once we release lots, we have no security. So the question becomes, what security do we need to retain in order to release the lots?
We need some sort of bond.
We need something, or, you know, again, it's less than in a normal circumstance, because we're waiving construction of the roadway, but, you know, do we have something for the ASBILs or anything? What?
Do you have? All right, I'm going to put up on the screen, you have an ASBIL. You have a letter from the engineer certifying the infrastructure's in place, and your town engineer Gene Willis reviewed it and said he's okay with it being released, so.
Except for a pile of debris.
The building inspector went out there and has noticed a pile of debris, and the abutters are here, and, oops, I did take, I have a picture in as well, okay.
But I, but part of the problem is that, how can we have an ASBIL if the construction hasn't occurred yet? What happens if during the construction, the, what is the driveway gets messed up? I mean, I don't see how you can certify ASBILs when the houses, we haven't even issued building permits yet.
I don't normally, I mean, this is a private way, so I'm sure, they had to get the roadway to a certain standard in order to release the lots. You are holding $1,000 on this site. You still have a thousand bonds.
I just don't think it's enough.
We need ASBILs for the homes, too, so this is not an ASBIL for the home.
You don't have those till you release a lot, so you can build on them.
Right, but that's why we need a bond to make sure we get them in the end. So if $1,000 doesn't cover the cost of an ASBIL, I would walk away from $1,000.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, is, the sewer's there already?
It can't be completely in, the sewer lines to the houses are only roughed and at best.
Yeah, well, that's.
It's not, it's not complete, so we need to have a, some sort of bond to open it.
Right, yeah, I mean, we need protection if there's a mess that, you know, it's probably not a lot of money, but Gene Willis should be able to tell us how much money he thinks is to do all the stuff that they haven't done yet.
He sent a letter saying he was okay with the lot release.
Yeah, I know, but it's, maybe we didn't ask him the right question, I don't know.
Well, what are they, what are they supposed to be building on the lots? We don't have that decision.
Well, no, I mean, they can build, as long as the houses are in conformity with zoning, but the problem is if there's drainage issues or anything like that.
Right, from the houses.
Yeah, from the houses, if there's sewer connection issues, if they have to go out into the street again, I mean, there's.
Sweet.
He's not here, so I think if you get answers to those questions, then we'll tee it up, but right now, you know, unless we're absolutely sure there's sufficient security, I don't see how we can release the lots.
I just want to write down your exact question, so you're wanting to know how much, this is a subdivision that has a decision that's been recorded March 16th, 2009. So what is it you're asking of the applicant?
Not the applicant, we need to come up with a bond number, that's what we.
Yeah, and to cover any possible work that relates to the right-of-way and out into Salem Street, we have to make sure that we have sufficient bond to cover any work that might impact that.
Yeah, because, I mean, they have to, if there's sewers, they have to clean it before they turn, you know, before they turn it over.
Yeah, and the problem ends up being, too, is if there's problem on the roadway, even though it's a private driveway, we want to make sure that it, you can access the homes, you know, even though in the end it's not going to be a public way, we, we need to have some assurance that, you know, I guess the sewer's in place, but, you know, it's, from the sewer to the houses, that's got to get fixed in, and that's going to, some of it's going to be in the public way.
What, $5,000 per lot, $10,000?
Yeah, it's probably a relatively small amount of money, five or 10, yeah, I think like $5,000 a lot would probably be enough, but that's what you need to, to assess.
And for the connection to the homes and site construction, is that it?
Anything that is off of the lot into the public way, anywhere.
Or any damage by a time after the homes are built, I mean, even if you put in, in the driveway, there's many times after the house is built, the trucks drive off the edge of the roadway and break the, you know, asphalt.
But this is a private way.
But we still want to make sure it's built right, it's, even if it's a private way, they have to build it according to the plan.
We just say, Gene.
The sewer line, we don't know if it functions yet, because it hasn't been completed through the houses.
That didn't come through, that was Gene's letter, saying that you could release the lots, okay.
No.
And that's the letter from the engineer.
That's from 2013.
Yes, nothing has happened since then.
Yeah, it's an interim ASBIL.
Yeah. For the roadway, right.
Did you say you had a file?
Yes.
It's not filed.
That's the aerial, let me just show you that one, and this, these could be from as long ago as 2012, some of these GIS aerials are not like yesterday. And the other one, this is of debris, oh, it's kind of dark, it's a debris pile kind of in the back of the site, which, you know, if we were going to condition, you know, the lot release, one condition would be that, upon the removal of the debris.
Well, I mean, everyone, the other houses is going to be even more debris.
There's construction.
And frankly, it's easy enough to remove debris, I don't know why that, why we'd have to condition it, just let them remove the debris and then we'll release the lot.
So, now, as you mentioned, Christine, that some abutters are here to talk about this.
I think they just wanted, they had asked if they want to speak.
Well, if you were, if you want to say something or add some clarity to the situation, come up to the mic and tell us where you, where you live and what your question is.
I'm Nancy Pace, and I live at 150 Salem Street, right beside the abutment. Mr. Cahill sold the home that he originally built last year, and we've always known that the other two lots would be built, and, you know, we're fine with that, you know. He does a very lovely job with everything that he does, it's just that he's chosen to take more than debris, lots of personal items out of the home, old bathtub, sinks, cupolas, you know, bricks, limestone, I can't tell you how much, and for seven years, we never said anything, and we woke up to doses every morning, we had to leave our pool area many times because of the dust from big equipment, and we were very patient and just didn't complain, tried to be good neighbors, but finally, we just called Jerry Brown up one day and just said, you know, "Do we even have a legitimate complaint? This is this person's land, I think it's within 30 feet of the boundary," which apparently is the requirement, "but we don't have anyone come to our house that doesn't say, 'What is that mess?'" And he finally moved it from outside our bedroom and bathroom windows to the lower corner, which he already had stuff there, because he sold the house last fall, but he left more than construction, I mean, there's much construction equipment, there's a big pile of loom, lots of rocks, a top over it, this is all that we view every moment that we're in our pool area, we have a lovely family room up above, and when we look out, it's just horrible, it's really bad. So, you know, we don't want to be difficult to Mr. Cahill, but it just is despicable that he would do this to us, we keep a nice home.
So, I think, I think the message is pretty clear, we're not going to release the lots until the problem gets fixed and we have a clear idea of what it's going to take to bond the work that needs to be done in the, in the public way, so, in the right-of-way.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I don't want to go too deep into that.
No, no, we don't need to be personal.
There's only certain things we could do.
If I had anything to do with him, I would throw him out of my.
Yeah, there's only certain things we could do.
He's a jerk.
Yes.
He shouldn't be in the building.
We're, we're not in the nicest place.
I know, okay, okay.
I know, it means a lot.
Do I have a question?
He's an ignorant person.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, let's, I got to cut you off, yeah, I got to cut you off there, so.
Did you have a recommend, you want your.
Well, I think you, I mean, I think probably $5,000 a lot's probably the number you should work with, but you got to talk to, to Gene and go through step by step.
So this is a performance guarantee for the remaining work?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if there's going to be, are they going to do anything more out into the street, and that when the, when it's done, it's got to look, the driveway's got to be in perfect shape, and if, you know, if you think about it, the driveway is going to be messed up to our construction, and we have to have enough money to fix it if, if there's a problem, we can't leave that open to chance.
And typically, John, we have something in our decisions about dust controls, they should be doing street sweeping and.
That sort of stuff anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so we, if we need to do this with the opening of a bond, a performance bond, maybe we should add some stuff in it that you can't stockpile trash on the property.
It lists that in your decision in the performance guarantee?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that decision, so, is that in this?
I don't know if that was in there.
Yeah, but maybe we have to look at putting something together before, you know, with the release of the lot and opening of it to make sure, you know, seven years is a long time.
Yeah, and I mean, to some degree, you know, I drive that street every day, and I don't see the back part of it, I just see the front part of it, and so.
It's your standard performance guarantee language that's in all these decisions.
I mean, the expectation is that there's really no externalities, and that if they exist for that long a period of time, that's not a good thing, I mean, for, you know, to have that happen for years and no real work on the property is, is a little bit of a problem. So, I think you got your, you know, direction here, and we will go from there, certainly. Please, if you don't see relief within a reasonable period of time, feel free to come back to Christine and, you know, complain, so you should, you know.
If I could just note that the debris isn't really in the roadway, it's on the property line of our backyard to his.
But it ties into what we normally expect as part of subdivisions being built and so forth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, the next item is a bond release for Fountain Drive for the North Andover Housing Authority, wants a release of the work done, and so where do we stand on that one?
That one, okay. Fountain Drive, this one, they did not need to tend, Gene, I did a drive-by, Gene, the DPW, your engineer, has agreed to this, this site improvement project, I'm just going to put this up, I know it's tiny, I think it's scanned, and they were sidewalks, a lot of site improvements on this project was handicapped accessibility to sidewalks, drainage, and repaving of all the walkways, the state paid for it.
This is one of the CPA projects, so, yeah, I think we did a site plan review because of the impact on the parking, so.
There are no building permits, no conservation, I looked the other day when it was raining, the drainage was working properly, Gene has signed off on it, I believe you're holding a couple thousand left.
So, it would be $5,000 plus, I assume, some interest, so, the, if you're okay with that, I think we, somebody should make a motion to release the remaining bond for Fountain Drive?
Just one thing, John, there was something about the state certification?
The Housing Authority, I did get a letter from her today from DHCD, it was a certificate of completion, because she said the state comes in and does the work and completes it, so Gene and I didn't see that, but I have got that copy.
Great.
So it's, it's cleared.
And Gene put it in writing that he's agreed to it?
He told me in person, we were at another site visit.
We just want to get those for the file, so, I'll make a motion to release the Fountain Drive, bond plus all interest, as soon as we get the letter from Gene signing off on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have 110 Sutton Street, one of our favorite ones, it's the release of bond funds for completion of landscaping, so, so maybe one of the members of the board can sort of give their spin on the history of it, because it's a convoluted history, so.
No, I don't think it's a convoluted history.
No, it's not.
I think that they've been before us at least twice, last time was in June of 2014, and we gave them very specific instructions on how they were to comply with the site plan, and they've done maybe 20% of it.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
If that, 20%. They have three trees up, I went by today.
Not even in the right location.
Not even in the right location.
And the trees are not screening trees, those are a particular variety of river birch that doesn't get much thicker than that, no.
But we had, we had, that there were going to be azaleas, or there were going to be different kinds of landscaping that would be placed by the building.
See, they got a couple of ones back by the site.
No, they don't.
Here, so they can fully use it. Is this, this is what you approved, I mean, this is what I found in the file, this kind of drawn, so.
That's, that was their plan, this is our approval.
We approved that with modifications, if you look at the June 17.
From the minutes.
Yeah, from the minutes.
We, we were being nice to not make them come back to another meeting with another set of plans to, because they said they wanted to get it done last season, so we said, "Okay, take your plan, we want more plantings around these arborites, and we wanted some more azaleas, we wanted mounted mulch beds, and we wanted the trees, we specified the height of the trees, the caliper, you know, the calipers, so the height, and all that stuff, and we also specified that it was going to be, the trees would be situated, and all the plantings would be situated in a way that there would never be any parking on that area, because that's what they had made was a parking lot, without approval, so.
But you remember that letter that you attached, that you sent around, from, I guess, the manager or the owner, said, "When you do these things, you'll still be able to use that area for plant, for parking."
Yeah, which they had sent us, that's why we.
And they assured us, they had no intention of ever parking there.
Yeah, so, I'll make a motion to not release the bond until the plan meets the, this plan plus the additions from the minutes.
So the sketch drawing plus the minutes of?
June 17, 2014.
June 17, 2014, plus sketch.
Karen Carberry was here.
Okay, so motion made is to deny the release of the bond for 110 Sutton, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I do have one further discussion, I noticed when, when we were there, that actually on the, as you're facing the building, the right-hand side, there is a gravel driveway that goes along the right-hand side, but it is open to that front area, so that cars could just drive in and park there, and, you know, and yet they've completely with sign and planting blocked off the other side of it, and that was never addressed in anything that we have here, I think we need to see.
The plantings were going to deal with that.
Well, they don't, and the way they continue to, to just do what they want, it's.
Okay, well, I mean, we're not going to give them the bond money, that's a little bit the leverage that we have there. Okay, moving right along to public meetings or continued public hearing on, or I should say, our continued discussion on 1665 Great Pond Road, request an extension of the watershed permit, where do we stand on that one?
You do have a draft of the extension letter in your packet, and Vince Manzi is here to represent that project.
Okay, so we will, we will hear the councilor out, and then we will talk, so, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Attorney Vincent Manzi, my office is at 280 B Merrimack Street in Methuen, Massachusetts, and I'm pleased to be here tonight representing the Technical Training Foundation. I've actually represented the Technical Training Foundation for about 25 years, when Dr. Al Hefney owned it, and now his daughter runs it for him since he passed. I apologize, I understand there was a lot of confusion at the last meeting, I really haven't had anything to do with this project for about two years, since I worked with Mr. Brown on getting the variance, going back to the ZBA, getting the variance reestablished, it was granted, I think, in 68, the subdivision was granted around the same time, and it took a lot of work just to reconstruct everything for him a couple of years ago, we did it, he was pleased, and he approved it. Since then, I hadn't been involved, so I found out just a couple of days ago, beginning of last week, that it was a little bit of a fiasco in the presentation last week, last meeting, and I apologize that the information wasn't organized properly. I know there were two items on that agenda, 1665 and 1661, the only thing that's on the agenda for tonight is the extension of the watershed permit for 1661, and I believe this board voted that in two years ago, I looked at the decision, I think many of your signatures are on it, we're just looking to extend it, because we, because of the economy, we had not, had the opportunity to begin construction there, and we would just like the opportunity to extend it so we can construct on that lot in the future.
So, now, is this, okay, again, if you can refresh our memory from two weeks ago, is this the new lot?
Yes, it is the new lot, it's not the house, it's not the lot with the house, the lot with the house is 1665.
It's the one in the yellow, if you look on it.
So, is the, is the discussion on 1665 or 1661, it says 1665 here?
Well, assessors, the assessors have them as 1665, lots 19 and lot 12.
Right.
So it's the lot number that you're concerned with.
Okay.
It's lot 12, it's the undeveloped lot in yellow.
Okay.
And they need an extension of the permit and decision that's due to expire in July.
So, that's a different discussion than we had the last time.
Yes, last time.
As I said, I read the meetings, Mr. Chairman, I read the meetings, and it was, it was extremely confusing, and I apologize, I, I'm here to try to get things back on track a little bit, and answer any questions, and do what I have to do to get it back on track, because there will be two issues, there will be an issue with 1665 also, but right now, the only thing on the agenda tonight is the extension of the special, the watershed permit, which has already been granted for the vacant lot, lot 12, and it is expiring July 2nd of 2015, it was granted on July 2nd, 2013, and we would like to extend that permit.
Wasn't there a shed on the empty lot, or a structure in the empty lot that had to come down, is that the one that borders the lot line? I know these lot lines don't always show up, you know.
Yeah, it must be, that, as you know, a lot of the, the house out there is already torn down, they, they received demolition, demolition permit, they haven't completely demolition, demolished 1665, but a lot of it is, and probably that section that you see overlapping is probably gone now.
Okay.
Is the structure that's?
Bisected by the lot line, and that is.
Okay, okay.
So, I have two questions, one, are what you're proposing on the lot that has no structure today exactly what we approved, or is it going to be something different?
No, single-family home tied into the sewer.
But with the same, according to the same set of drawings, and in other words, the driveway, everything is going to be exactly the same, not going to change anything from what was on these plans?
I asked that question today, Mr. Chairman, and the bottom line is, I had reviewed this with, actually, TEC, the engineering firm, a few years ago, and we looked at how to rearrange lot lines, but because of the variance and the age of the variance and the, and the subdivision that was granted, we can't touch anything, we can't change anything. If we change anything, everything goes void, so, yes.
This plan has a house location, it has a driveway, it has cuts, it has drainage, it has all that sort of stuff, is everything, is what you're going to build on that lot exactly what's in that plan?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we're asking for the permit that was granted on that plan to be extended with no changes, so the answer is yes.
Okay, okay.
If we were going to change that, we would have to come back to you, and we're not doing that, at least not tonight, that I know of, no one has told me that there's any change to the plans, all we're looking to do is extend, extend the permit that was granted with the filing for that plan in that house.
So, the other one is, can you go back to the other one that we had?
Aerial or the?
The aerial, the one that we were just looking at before. Is the, the thing I'm confused about looking at that is, that existing house, when you create the lot lines for the new house, there's no way, even if you take down that building, that that other house is 30 feet away from the lot line, am I missing something here?
You have to remember that the variance in the plot plan, the variance in the subdivision was granted in 1968, so those requirements were not in place, these are all grandfathered in, that's why we can't change the lines. I mean, Jerry Brown wrote a memo on that, and I believe it's in the file, isn't it, Christine?
There are, yes, the ZBA, yeah, I mean, you've, you've confirmed the lots of two lots, and.
Lot 12, was lot 12 formed in 1968?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yes, it was, sir, that's the whole point about, when we engaged tech, we thought we could come up with a better, you know, a better car, and we found out if we tried to do that, it would void everything that was done, so, of all, of everything that was granted, so we have to, we have to live with everything that was granted in 68, prior, a lot prior to the setback in the zoning requirements that are in place now.
As long as that's been confirmed, and we're hearing that it was confirmed, I mean, I just, I've never seen anything that showed that it was formed in 66, that, or 62, or.
I'll find it, it's in the files, they confirmed, because it was.
Because that's my one question last time was, if that's.
They still have the hay bales up?
Yes.
Well, probably for 1665, because that work is stopped, and we.
It's along the right-hand side of the grassy, the coming out of it, and that's the lot that's outlined in green, it was on the right-hand side.
Right-hand side?
Yeah, going toward the pond, the little pond there.
Well, it should have.
I can certainly find out, but I've only, I'm kind of like fresh back into this and not familiar with the construction is on it, other than I know that they started, they got it, they received a demolition permit from the building inspector, and they began demolition of 1665, staying within the existing foundation, and it's very possible that at that time, they determined that in order to protect erosion control, that's where the hay bales had to go, they owned all of it, it's all owned by the same people.
So what is the plan on, how much time are you asking for?
Two years.
How long?
Two years.
Do one?
Yeah, one year.
Okay.
Yeah, one year.
One year's fine.
Because, you know what, if the rules change on watershed, we want to be able to update them.
Pete, do you have any questions or opinion on this? I know you talked the last time, you had some questions, did you get your questions answered?
I understand the impact of having this, you know, this having been done in 68, it is, you know, a new structure along the lake, and I don't think it's something we would do if it wasn't from 1968.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a smaller lot and located, I mean, the one thing that I will say is, we did two years ago, I can't say I vividly remember, but we went through a fairly, you know, elaborate due diligence process, and, you know, had our engineer look at it, they had an engineer, all the mitigating sort of things, and we did approve it, I mean, you know, and so, you know, I, I think it's, it's not like something has happened since then that, you know, would cause us to step back and say, "No," if, you know, if they had dug like partway holes and everything and made a hash of it, it might be a different story, but I think we.
So, the only other question I did have was, from the last meeting, was. So the only other question I did have was, from the last meeting, was if this, how this related to the work that we've, we heard a few meetings ago to rebuild the transfer station, which is right adjacent to that line? And if there's any interference there between those two?
Where is the transfer?
The driveway is going to be close, in all honesty.
Yeah.
It's going to be, yeah, very close.
It's about 10 to 20 feet away.
Which is close, yeah. That's less than a car lot, the 20 feet.
Yeah. And so that was my question. I mean, I had a number of questions at the last meeting, but I went back and reviewed the record as you just described, John, and I can see that. But the question that I couldn't review on my own was, which I had asked at the last meeting, was, is there any interference there? Just in terms of, you know, separation of distance. I know this decision was taken two years ago and then several meetings ago, much more recently, we took the decision to rebuild that station.
With extra parking?
The rebuilding of the station was?
With extra parking around it?
The DPW.
The DPW.
Yeah.
Now, they haven't come to us yet, have they?
No, they were here, yeah, prior to the town meeting.
Three, four meetings ago.
Oh, the one, yeah. But that was to get a permit or to just discuss it as part of the budget?
No, to get a permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, they wouldn't know what the driveway placement was going to be for their driveway.
It is to get a permit.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the only thing is, to some degree, it's less an issue, it's an indirect watershed issue in that if, if from a, what I'm going to say, general construction best practice point of view, you know, you don't want to put those things close together and then that means it's a change in the plan, what we can do is, we can condition the approval that if that causes any change, required change in the plan, then they will have to come back to us because it would be a modification. I think that would be, that would probably be the best way to handle it.
Can I help you out for a second? I'm looking at the site plan and the driveway entrance, and if you look on the picture, you'll kind of see a dot in the street there.
Yep.
That's about where the driveway entrance is and it's 30 feet from that point. So they have 30 feet from their property line to where they're going to enter the driveway on kind of a straightaway. The public property is obviously now beyond, beyond that. So for a single driveway, for site distance, they're 30 feet from the edge of their line in more of a straightaway.
So the?
So I can't imagine?
So it would at least be 45 feet or so from the town infrastructure.
DPW, whatever they're going to do.
Well, we can still, that would be fair because you would have to do that anyway. If somebody said, you don't want to put the driveway there for some reason that that causes, you'd have to come back to us anyway. Probably, it's probably not going to change because it's probably the best location. It's probably the best location from a, yeah, from a topography point of view too, so.
John, the only thing that I would be concerned is, that's a long run of a sloped driveway coming down. And if we're talking a potential for runoff, it would be along that.
Well, I mean?
And I know it was addressed in the?
In your site plan.
Well, we approved it and the point ends up being is, if we have to change it for some reason, they have to come back.
You can see on your site plan, I think Lynn asked at the last meeting about the different levels of peystone throughout the drive. They're noted on the plan. I know this is tilted sideways, but you've got the erosion control measures in place for that particular driveway on that plan.
As of two years ago.
Nothing's changed there yet, so I would hope it's still.
So how does everybody feel of a one-year extension subject if there's any changes, they have to come back?
Would it still be, as you described earlier, that potential impacts with that DPW plan right next to it?
Right, that's what I mean. It would be that we would approve, we would extend the permit for a year, subject to the condition if there were any changes in the driveway were in the plan caused by any factor, they would have to come back to us for modifications. So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
We have a decision here. So do you want to read the decision?
Let's see.
And mark it up?
It's actually, yeah, it is a decision. So, yeah, so I think it's a motion to expend the watershed special permit for a year, subject to any changes, have to come back to the board. So I think that's fine.
We would do that anyways.
Yeah.
Just, you can reference the date of the site plan.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Because this is not a public hearing. This is a request to extend, so we can make a vote to do that.
I'll make a motion to extend for lot 12 at 1665 Great Pond Road, the watershed special permit for one year, subject to any modifications, they have to come back to the planning board.
Okay.
Second. I'm sorry.
Oh.
I apologize.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of points too, just for the record and make everybody feel a little uncomfortable, I hope. As you probably know, Technical Training Foundation is a nonprofit organization. Everything that they make when they sell this goes back into the community. There's no, there's no profit made by any individual. So, you know, they work hard to try to get it done right. We did Campion Hall, and when we did Campion Hall, we tied in with the Sisters of Notre Dame at Notre Dame Academy. And all of the profits from that 40B went to Notre Dame Academy, you know, for scholarships for children and the like, so.
Are the profits from this going to go to someplace in North Andover?
Well, I mean, it could. They have, I mean, I will suggest that to the trustees.
I'm just saying.
I understand. Although I believe that the worst, there was definitely money from the Campion Hall development that went into Notre Dame.
Okay, I'm choosing.
And if I can, Mr. Chairman, if that issue is resolved, the other issue that was on the table last month was a waiver on 1665. And I just wanted to talk for a minute, just if I could, to see whether or not there'd be any acceptance to possibly coming back with a motion to reconsider because looking at the watershed permit, I fully, the waiver provision under section 4, 16 subsection 8, it defines specifically what has to happen for the board to grant the waiver. And it talks about technical plans being submitted with any requests for a waiver. None of that was done. And there was confusion as between this one and that one. The bottom line is, it talks about existing structures that are, the topography is not going to be changed, that it's going to be on a sewer, and if those things are met and we also agree to enter contracts with the planner to deal with erosion control and to stop the project if she says. It's very well defined as to what, when the waiver can be granted. I would just ask the board to consider allowing me to come back with detailed plans for that to show that there is no topography change. It is all within the existing structure. It is tied into sewer. And we have contracts with the planner to comply with the rest of the waiver provisions in seeking a waiver on that house. Because it's an existing structure, we're not changing the foundation, we're not changing the topography. But I don't want you to believe that for me. I want you to have plans from Andover, Methuen, no, Andover Consultants in Methuen, who is working on that right now. And I would ask if I should consider coming back next month with a written request for that. Would you entertain it?
I went down and looked at the site. Couple of issues. There is going to be changes to landscaping, and there already has been, which means as soon as you start doing landscaping, you have retaining wall issues over there, you have your front steps which need to be excavated. It's pretty significant to our watershed.
And the driveway is?
Yeah. And honestly, we got a chance, you're gutting it completely, you want to take it down to the foundation. We want, we want the roof, we're going to want the roof drainage, and I think we're not, none of us are qualifying, you know, we want our outside consultant to review it and we're going to bring it up to current code. It's a complete?
I'm just asking if I could have the, I believe those issues, I read from the last decision. And I understand that the removal of the shrubbery, et cetera, raised a question as to whether or not that was going to affect drainage and topography. I've been told by the engineer, no. That and 50 cents gets me on the subway, a buck now. I understand that. I fully, I've been around this rodeo a long time.
Yeah, it seemed to me that frankly, if you applied, we'd rush it through. The amount of time we'd spend sort of kind of going through and doing our due diligence is about the same amount of time that you would take anyway, and it'd just be a little bit cleaner and it'd be more transparent because it would be an open, public hearing process.
Thank you.
And we won't slow you down because it's relatively small, but you know, as Lynn said, if the roof drainage changes, the slope of the roof changes, you know, whether you put, you know, dry wells in, all that sort of stuff matters, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll take that back to the owners.
And again, we're not trying to like run up this meter or anything like that, but we'd like, given, as Lynn said, it's right next to the lake, we'd like to?
I fully understand.
More service, so.
Our consultant's very reasonable on her time, so, I mean, she's always been very good on the building.
I have no problem with that. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Members of the Board.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we are doing 121 Osgood Street. And so what, okay, we'll let the planner, anything new since the last time we discussed this? If you could kind of recap what we discussed last time and what has happened since then? Well, if, see, could you sort of give us your take on?
Okay, I will. I'll give you a quick update. Essentially, I sat down with the building inspector and the board of health, department head, and Harry, and we talked about Harry's plans and what has been permitted on that site. And actually, I'm going to call up this one. Essentially, the existing, this existing tenant in unit one is bakery. It's a buy-ride business in your general business district. It has a board of health certificate for 10 seats and it has 10 parking spaces associated with its use. If he maintains the 10 seats and the 10 parking spaces do him as a tenant, there's no change. There's no change that triggers site plan review or site plan modification whatsoever. His food service business is classified by the board of health as the same as the bakery. It's a fast food vendor. They don't classify it as a restaurant. So technically, we asked him, if you want to keep your business plan to 10 seats and to those certifications of no change, you should be able to occupy that regardless of anything going on on the site associated with another tenant. And the building inspector and myself and the department head, the board of health were in agreement on that. And I think he'll speak to his business plan in a minute. The fact that he happens to be, now be co-owner of the plaza itself gives him additional responsibility associated with that other tenant, which he is happy to speak to the progress on that project after.
This is the restaurant.
The landscaping and the traffic and the restaurant. He'll speak to that second.
I do have a quick question.
That's where we're at.
Vacant, but number two, is that vacant any longer?
No, they're not. That may, this might have, this was the document from when the restaurant went in. So this might be occupied, but unit two might, it has yoga place?
It's called Soul, it's a bike place. But it's open at night also, right?
It's open in the early morning and then about three or four hours in the evening.
Just a follow-up question for Christine. In terms of 10-seat, 10-parking spaces, no changes. Would there be a change in the hours?
I think this, his hours might be slightly different than the bakery, but I don't know what the bakery's hours were. I wasn't working here then, so I don't know.
So the building inspector give an opinion on what triggers the difference between retail and restaurant? How many seats, you know, how many, I mean, because that's, that's pretty?
It's food vendor. Fast food vendor. It's a health code.
Fast food vendor? Close to a?
It's different than a licensed restaurant. They're just different.
And if that, but we don't have fast food vendor anywhere in our bylaws, so I don't think we have that as a classification, so.
Yeah, there might be, I'm trying to remember what we do. We don't have that, but there's, I think there's a distinction, I thought the distinction was whether there's seating or not.
Right. So I'm, I think we need to know, we can hear this, but if that's the case, we're going to need an opinion whether from Jerry saying how he gets to it being retail, not, you know, because if it's not retail, then it's a change of use.
But it may be a change of use for parking spaces.
But I mean, the overall thing, what we, I mean, step back for a second to what we want to accomplish here. We, I think we want to accomplish two primary things. One, we want to make sure that there's no externalities that impact the neighbors. That's, that's one. And the second is that we want to ensure that there's decent entrance, parking and egress from the property. And as a result of putting these uses in, we cause a problem that we don't want to cause. So I think if we look at the thing with that filter, because, you know, we said, part of the problem with some of these things is you don't always know until you actually do it.
Which is why we said to come back for modifications, but we're not doing that now.
Well, maybe we should.
That's right.
Maybe we should.
So that's why, okay.
But, go ahead.
As far as the Lots of Eats opening, I've spoken to them. They are tenantly opening probably the end of this month, beginning of next. I am working with the landscaper for the underscore plantings. Those should be in within the next two weeks. I spoke to Christine to find out exact location. I was a little confused exactly where they were to be placed, and we figured that out as well. So within the next week or two, those should be planted. And as well, I'm going to put some plantings in the island for screening. There's a small island in the middle.
So that will get the site in compliance with our last decision.
I know we spoke about that last time when I was here.
Okay.
So that part is all set.
So you're comfortable, Christine, that if he does that, we'll be in compliance?
I think the only issue that was out there was the landscaping that, and, you know, the traffic study, you know, the traffic analysis, once that restaurant's up and running. You wanted to, a six-month and a 12-month interval to kind of check in and look at the parking lot. But the landscaping, I've been out there several times, and on your site plan, I'm going to pull this one up, wrong one. We've talked about the back, the back of the, I'm not getting it. Maybe we'll just go with aerial.
Pines, would they, very elevated?
Yeah, you know what? One of the things, this strip in the middle, the big long strip, this picture's two years old. Those white pines are maturing and growing in. Nothing much would grow underneath them for an under-story planting. And on the other side of the road, it's all wooded along the road there. The area that would be more amenable to a little bit of streetscaping is this corner entrance. Those are deciduous trees, so if you had a little under-story planting there, and the island in the middle, it's just a green ground cover about two inches off the mulch. Those are beautification areas, and those are also very visible to the neighbors that enter the town farm road over there. So the investment in landscaping would be well-suited on that side, and that's nearest the restaurant also.
But we also promised the people along that strip, so they has to, that's what we, it wasn't, that was a buffer because all the trash was blowing out across the street and everything like that. And the trees, the pine trees are pretty elevated. They're up at least five feet off the ground, yeah.
You can ask his landscaper to plant stuff. I don't know how much will grow. Once those things grow in, they're pretty dense, there's no sunlight coming through, but.
You can do, there's plenty, you know, you can do hosta, you can do daylilies, you know, those are good shade plants. There's plenty, you don't have to plant them underneath. It's supposed to be the buffer. You can plant them in front on the side, you know, to?
On the street side.
To fill, yeah, to fill that space underneath, you know, where the sightline isn't going underneath the pines.
And what about as far as on the other side, where there aren't any trees? Something about two or three feet?
Which?
The end, toward Barker, when you turn out to?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's a signature part. That I think works to your advantage if you want to run by having a more attractive street scape. So, yeah, doing something down there would be great.
Yeah, but that part, that part we didn't require. But that wasn't where the neighbors?
That was there to take a picture the other day.
But would be, highlight your business and have it cleaner and everything like that, you know.
From the neighbors coming out, I noticed that street, that's what you'd seek when you're pulling out as far as instead of the back, but either way.
I can imagine this corner here, there's one house, you can see it here, by Barker, by the word across. That particular house, there is nothing that will screen the back of the site for that house. It faces the entrance, it's open, it's the back of the building, and there is like greenery, there's, you know, a bunch of trees in the point of the site, and that is the location of the dumpster. So if anybody had any, that's something that I just, you can't put a tree in the driveway.
It is.
Yeah, it's fenced, but, so I'm guessing that that might have been your complaint from perhaps that property owner?
No, actually, it was, it was that strip.
Yeah, it was further down.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it wasn't one, it was numerous we had. Because what happens is the businesses, something gets dropped on the ground and it blows out underneath, you know, so they figured some plantings would stop some of the trash blowing over, you know. People drop coffee cups that go out of their car. There's nothing you can do about that, but that's one of the things they were, you know, trying to fill in that, but, yeah.
So we have the planning now. In terms of the proposed use, what, where does that stand in terms of the new use of that thing? How does everybody?
I was asking your board to make a determination that he does not need a site plan modification for the fast food business that he'd like to open. And again, we were in the process to remind him as a property owner, you got him in here to remind him about the landscaping and the traffic studies, so I think he's clear on that. So I don't know that if you have to make a decision or not.
Well, if the building inspector says that it's a retail establishment, then it's not a change, and if he puts it in writing, then that's his decision. I mean, in all honesty, we don't have authority, but if he's not willing to put it in writing, then I'm saying that we should probably just do a quick modification.
I'd ask for it in writing.
If that's, if that's his opinion, then he's willing to say that there's no parking change, that it's retail, it falls under the same classification, but then it can never, you know, what you're gonna have is you're gonna have a retail establishment. If your business grows, you're not gonna be a restaurant. So you may want to come in for a modification just so you don't have a problem. You want to sell the business, you know, it takes off, and you want a restaurant, it's going to be retail or fast food or whatever.
I'm wondering if you allow 10 seats regardless? You know, it's not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to grow it as far as seating-wise.
Actually, you might, because we might, depending on your hours of operation-
Right, depending on what's going on with the lot.
We might give you more parking, because if they stack it enough, we're okay with that, in all honesty. We, you know, we realize that some businesses use parking at 9:00 a.m., and some use it at 9:00 p.m., you know, we will, you know, but you're gonna lock, you may lock yourself into a situation opposed to fixing it now.
Because what if you wanted to join two of the units?
Like the other day, I wanted, I wanted to do a store.
Yeah, like I said, if it takes off, you're gonna lock yourself in, you know, that's, and I think it's a, I think the fast food is a very fine definition, you know, that you may be locking yourself into, you know, so.
So what would you like to see from the building inspector?
Well, if the building inspector writes a letter saying that this is no change of use, then that it falls under the retail and parking and fast food, and it's not a restaurant, then we have no purview.
Right. And if-
If he's not willing to do that, then I think, like I said, we should do a quick-
Do we have, refresh my memory, if it's a minor modification, do we actually have to public hear it, or can we-
A minor modification, we could do it on our own. He could have come in here, written it up, and we could have done a minor modification tonight.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, I mean, you know, I don't want to have the applicant coming back, and I know, I know you probably enjoy being at our meetings, but probably not that much.
A lot to attend to.
Yeah, you know.
It's interesting.
So we don't want to kind of, you know, cause you all sorts of aggravation, time and effort to come into our meetings. I mean, ultimately, you know, sometimes I think the, the special permit thing works for certain types of things, but for other types of things, it's almost like you'd wish, you know, the planner or the building inspector had some discretion, is, is there a parking problem or not? Is there a, a litter problem or not? And then just fix it, and that's, that's really what we want. But let's, if, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll see if the building inspector can write that letter. Is that, is everybody okay with that?
Now, would I just consider me retail, or will I be able to, will we consider it fast food restaurant?
It's not that we consider it a restaurant. The, the special permit says you can't have a restaurant without coming back to us for a modification.
Now, what was, what do I have to do to do that? Just come back and-
If you want to come back and it's a minor modification, just come to us with a, you know, sort of a full set of, you know, everything you're gonna do and everything you're possibly gonna do, and then we'll decide, you know, I mean, probably what we'd, we'd ask the same thing, is that what's the parking impact gonna be three months down the road, six months down the road? Is there gonna be enough space, given the hours and all the other uses there? And then how are you gonna manage litter and other potential-
How are you gonna manage parking if you, you know, if there's a peak time issue?
And down the road, we would know about any conflict with the other restaurant and with the total parking.
But could he wait until down the road? I mean, if, if Jerry will sign the letter, then he could come back later on, right, to modify it.
Okay. Well, if Jerry will sign the letter, Jerry will sign the letter.
Right, you do a great great-
Later on, if you want to come back.
I'm saying, nothing prevents him from coming later on.
Just so we can get the ball rolling.
Yeah, you could get, yeah, you could do that. You could do that, but, but I think Lynn's point's well taken, is you want to protect yourself if you're really going to expand that use, because it's really kind of not a 100% retail use, so, yeah. So, but, yeah, so we, we wish you much success. We hope that you do well, so, you know, we don't want to slow you down, but we want the thing to work. And, you know, frankly, any property that directly affects residential, we take a little bit more scrutiny on, so.
Did I hear you say that the Chinese restaurant or the Thai restaurant?
Thai restaurant.
But an Asian fusion, I guess, is, that that's gonna open soon?
They're, I spoke to them the other day, I met with them, not met with them, but I ran into them, and they were hoping the end of this month, beginning of next month. I don't know how they are with their inspections or where, where they stand with their point with the city, with the town and stuff. I, honestly, I don't know. She called me a couple of weeks ago and asked me about the plantings, and I said, well, I'm gonna, I was coming here, and that's when I found out from you guys that I had to do the plantings. So I spoke to them about it, said, listen, it has to get done. I'm going back tonight. I said, I'll find out exactly what you guys want, and I'll go back to you, and, you know, it'll get done. As far as the plantings, I don't know what they have to do on their end, as business owners, what they need to do, that's, that's their thing, not-
Now, why are you, just one comment, you said you were limited to 10 seats. Why are you limited to 10 seats? Is that because of the classification you were trying to get in as?
Right, right. When we spoke to, when I spoke to Jerry the other day, you know, I was advised that it's 10. If it stays 10, it's not like you have to go for anything special or as far, as far as parking things or-
Right, it's gonna increase his parking if he goes to more tables.
Well, sure, yeah, okay.
And then we're gonna run into the, yeah.
Yeah, see, I would come back for a modification, because 10 seats is pretty limiting, because that's actually about seven seats, because you know how people, it's a single-person hall, so it would take a four-person table and, you know.
No, exactly.
You probably just want to come back for the modification sooner than later, because if the business takes off-
Well, I'd like to get the ball rolling as far as my bill, but, you know, get it open and, and going, so.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Okay.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, 1600 Iskut Street. I did talk to Town Council about this, about what are our options, and what we decided was that we were considering the option of accepting the withdrawal, voting it down, and we actually talked, and the recommendation of Town Council was to actually keep it open until a decision was made at the ZBA about the allowed use. So that's, I talked to Tom and to Carol about that, and that's what he recommended, because that's the way that would give us the, sort of the most flexibility in terms of moving forward. So if, obviously, if the ZBA decides against the applicant, that is, makes our decision a little bit easier. If it approves it, we just continue forward with the application, and we view it on its merits. So that's, that's what they recommended, so I don't know if, you know, if people had any thoughts or-
I think we take Town Council's advice. I mean, that's why we have them.
Fairest way to do it.
Yeah, so. We will let you speak, if you will, but that's-
So I have nine questions for you tonight.
How many?
Nine.
Nine.
Question number one was, did planning board speak to attorney herbalis and get some guidance as they specifically mentioned at the last meeting?
And there you go.
There you go.
There you go.
So I would like to take my other eight questions and put them away till some other night.
Good, we'd like that.
Okay. That's, I, that was, I believe, our first preference when we were here last time, so that would be, that would be fine.
So we're just gonna keep it open?
We're just gonna continue to keep it open. I don't, I think this is a special permit, we don't have any time windows clicking, but certainly if we find out that we do, we would, you know, want you to agree to extend the time to render a decision.
So you're gonna open up a second question to me, which is, I know you keep referring to it as a special, special permit, but it's not a special permit, it's a plan approval.
I will hear you for a second to that effect, but the, if, what I'm saying is that it's functionally, I believe it's functionally similar to a special permit, in that, you know, in the, in the case of a subdivision, you have to render a decision with a certain number of days after the, it's open. I don't believe we have to render a decision with a certain number of days, but if in fact we do, you're going to give us an extension for however much time we need.
Let me do this, just while we're here, and I think I actually copied that section today, so let me, if I've got it, I want to give it to you so that, okay.
Do you have the bylaw?
It's, it's under 40R.
Let me, let me clarify one thing for him. Site plan, when you look at state law, special permits, as you know, have a, the clock starts ticking at a certain point, and if you get close to the end, the client can extend it or, you know, you can continue and agree to extend your action time. Your town, site plan review varies town to town, and the state law is somewhat silent, you know, on that, because in your town, you consider your site plan reviews as special permits. So they're held to a little bit different standard. In my community, a site plan review is a by right decision, that we're only conditioning and shaping. So the state is kind of silent, doesn't dictate your time the same.
My point ends up being is that the, if you do a subdivision, the clock ticks when you open the hearing, and you have to do something with a certain number of days, and in the case of a special permit, it's from when you close the hearing to rendering a decision. And I just want to ensure that for this permit, that's exactly how they got told.
I think there's some confusion in the terminology, and again, there's not clear guidance from the state, because you have a blended permit here, so.
If I might, there actually is guidance from the state under 40R, 11th C. It's 120 days from the acceptance of the application. So it's an application for approval under this section, which is 40R application filed by an applicant with a severe town clerk, and copy the application, you know, let's just take it to here. The decision about the approval authority shall be made in a notice of the decision filed with the city or town clerk within 120 days of the receipt of the application.
Okay, so that's 40R. So when did you, when is the date?
Well, so we're coming up on 80-something days, so it was March, March 25th.
So we need 120. So what we would probably do, if that's the case, is we would ask you for a, what's 120 days from the application?
What was it, March?
March 20th.
Oh, July 20th, roughly.
March, what's it, April, May, June, July, so that's-
March 20th. Was July 20th, application date.
So July 20th. So we would want, we have a formal form for extensions.
Request for extension, you can file that.
So we would want, let's make it for now to the end of August. Would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, what I was gonna suggest-
Or maybe-
Is let's stop the clock tonight, so through tonight, we've used up however many days it is. Then toll it from tonight until the ZBA decision is rendered, and then we'll pick the clock back up again when the ZBA decision is rendered.
Well, I'm okay, but I just don't know functionally how you memorialize that. I mean, and, you know-
ZBA could take three months.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't-
I know it could take three months, but the point is, how do you actually, I don't mind if you, I'll tell you what, if you want to take a, a stop to write that up, I'm perfectly fine to see what it looks like, I'm all accepted.
Otherwise, I think the, the alternative is to appear every single month to make sure that they don't issue-
Or we just push it out three or six months or something like that, however you want to do it. I don't care if, if you write it up in a way that it achieves what you want, we'll look at it and we'll vote it in our next meeting.
But you have my time to-
I mean, your problem is, ZBA could render a decision the night after our meeting, and then-
Well, they're not going to, so, let's, yeah.
So we're going to the ZBA on the next Tuesday, the 23rd.
So if somehow we got lucky and we got it done in one meeting, we'd want to get back sooner rather than later, because the allotment of solar, recs, and some of the other benefits that would be beneficial to the town-
Can we just keep it simple? Let's extend it month to month. We can write it off, it's a form, build it in 30 days, you know.
I mean, he basically said he'll take it from July 20th, the number of days back to today.
So we already have 90 days in, pretty much, so we have a, so he's gonna say, stop the clock in 30, so we have a 30-day window after ZBA, so.
Yeah, I know, but the problem, the problem is, that's hard to memorialize.
Oh, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
That's my point, that's why I want a date certain.
When are the hearings, so after tonight, when are the next couple of hearings?
First and third Tuesdays of the month.
So first and third Tuesdays of July, so.
July 2nd, I believe, and July 16. 16.
Okay. So I actually, just thinking in advance, I'm gonna be away July 16th. So do you want to continue till July 2nd? We'll come in that night, we'll give you the status of where the ZBA is, and then if we-
It's Thursday. Well, I'd rather you go a, a further step than this.
Okay, hold on.
The planning board will meet July 7th, July 21st, and you guys selected August 18, one meeting in August. I'm not, that's what's on the calendar. If that doesn't work, feel free to let me know.
Yeah, that's correct.
But those are the three meetings.
We're going on a national night out for the first time.
We'd like to come back July 7th if possible.
And I, I would like to have them fill out a formal request for a time extension.
Well, I'd rather, at a minimum, you give us something that we will have in hand before the next meeting, that says it's a request either to a date certain, like the end of August, or written clearly enough that, you know, that lays out what you're suggesting. I don't like the way you've done it, because it's, it's, it could be open-ended, and I, I don't want to leave it like that. I don't see how you can-
There's 30 days in June, 14, 7, 21 days. So if we continue at 21 days from tonight, and I give you a 21-day extension right now, does that solve it? And then we can deal with it on July 7th?
Well, all, all I want is something that gives us some more time, so I don't have to worry about it the next time. Why can't you just give us till the end of August?
Because we are chasing state requirements to have certain solar submittals on a timely basis, and if we extend it out to some unknown date in the future, we potentially will cause some harm as far as what we can do with the state agencies for getting the recs. So what I'm asking is if we extend the hearing for 21 days, we'll extend the deadline for 21 days. And then let's come back July 7th.
Deadline isn't, isn't even gonna be over in twenty-one days. We still have that deadline.
No, I'm saying I would tack twenty-one days on to the end of it.
See, I don't think you can do that legally though.
So you're willing to give us an extension from twenty-one days past, so what's March?
So July twentieth plus twenty-one days, so eleven, August tenth.
Okay, fine. Can you, yeah, it has to be in writing.
Okay.
And so we'll make a motion to accept your extension, request for extension to August tenth, provided you give it to us in writing in our form.
Perfect. And the hearing will be continued till July seventh?
Yes.
Perfect. We'll get something over to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So would somebody like to make a motion to the...
So we extend the, uh...
We accept their, uh, the written extension of a date to render a decision for this permit till August tenth.
So...
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, and it is contingent on getting it in writing. Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, two forty-two Dale Street, what's going on here?
This is the new, a new public hearing.
Is this a, oh, so it is a public hearing?
Yes, that's why I get, like I said, I, it's usually in our board, we're a little more formal. We open them by reading the legal notice because makes it more official.
So, uh, could you explain to us?
The applicants are here. Um, they're, they're looking for, they're doing a home improvement project, backyard pool, patio. Um, they bought, um, a watershed area. It is not the lake, but they do fall in the watershed district, so they're here for a watershed permit. Um, they're, they were, were planning on going to Conservation Commission a week ago, but there wasn't a quorum, so they haven't finished CONCON, although I know the agents have been out there and they're okay with the plan. They're waiting to hear from the, uh, endangered species people because it's, it's listed as a potential candidate for perhaps turtles or something. So they're waiting to hear back from them, but Conservation has reviewed it.
So do we have a plan? Could you put up the...
I opened some plans up for you. I did some pictures. Um, this is the zoning map on Dale Street. Um, the green area, that is a wetland. It's, it's open water, but, and they have the lot in yellow. I'm gonna give you an aerial view of that same lot, and that'll probably help you out a bit. Um...
Okay, so, uh, do we have any plans?
Yes, we do. Um, so that, you can see, they're probably, the trees in the back, I believe they're probably removing some of those. They can speak to that. Um, let's see, application request, site development plan, that's what this comes up. And here we go.
You need to identify yourself, but wait, just wait a little bit.
Well, let's, I wanna look at what we got here.
I think before we go through the plans, the first aspect that they, is they requested a watershed, watershed special permit waiver. So these plans haven't been reviewed by our consultant, correct?
Yeah, now that's where I'm confused. Is this a request for a waiver, or is this actually a public hearing? Have they...
They're asking to waive, um, the cost of the, um, the engineer, the consultant.
No, but have they...
Did we get notifications? And we did, there was a formal permit?
They've done their legal notice to all the abutters.
Okay.
They've done their legal notice in the paper, all of that, and it's a watershed permit application. They're asking to waive the fee of the outside consultant, um, which the letter from their engineer states why, um, in the application narrative.
Which is...
Is it in that packet?
Yeah, it was.
So what is the explanation, or...
This is the letter, that's the request letter.
So which, uh, it's, where, does somebody have the letter?
This is the letter I wrote up.
No, that's the letter from the butter request, but not the letter from the engineer.
This is...
That's the owners, the property owners.
So have you gone through this? Can you give us the short story of what's in and what's out, you know?
Um, I, you know, the, it's an above-ground pool with probably, she, they can speak to the impervious surface around it. Um, it's, you know, it, the engineer has written the letter to you with his recommendations, um, about the erosion control measures and their plantings, and again, the Conservation Commission's walked the site and looked at it.
Where's the engineer's letter?
It was on the back of the application.
It was in the email, but it was...
So, well, let's, uh, let's let the applicants know. That might be a little bit easier at this point. My apologies for letting you kind of wave away. So if you could tell us what you're trying to do, and, uh, we can, we will ask you a few questions.
Do you want to speak into the microphone? There, it might help.
I'm the owner, Julie Niagara.
And, um, Rob, we live together. Um, we're applying together for the permit.
Okay, so if you could explain what you're trying to do, and, uh, that would be great.
So what we're trying to do is put an in-ground pool in the backyard.
Above ground?
I'm just kidding. It's above ground, but there is, the reason that we're going through this is because there's going to be a minimal amount of, um, of site work involved because the way the grade of the land is, it runs off away from the house. So there's gonna be a little bit of site work to level the pool out. Um, and then our plan is to build a, um, patio around the, the portion of the pool closest to the house, encompassing the front of it and about half, stopping halfway around on each side. What's that? Okay. It's gonna be a framed wooden deck, not a, not a, um...
So how, uh, what does the zoning say that they are allowed to do? They're under the old zoning because it's an old lot, right? So what are they, uh, allowed to do with it? Because how close is this from the, uh, the tributary to the lake?
It's, you know what, it's, um, what the watershed zoning says is that these uses are allowed under a special permit by the planning.
Well, but I ask, what does the zoning say? It's, it's, how far from the edge of the wetland is it, and what uses are allowed in that dis, in that area?
You got a lot of lines on here, because you got conservation lines and...
They're within the hundred foot. They're between the hundred and the fifty.
On the, on the right there, you'll see, um...
But they don't have the tributary.
One hundred feet of the buffer, the non-disturbance zone in the watershed. Again, it's, it's different because it's not the lake. I know, I think your standards are different for the, the lake.
Right, for the tributary is, and it's under the old zoning, so it's, I think it's within a hundred feet. Is this less than a hundred feet?
They're in the seventy-five to one fifty, which I believe is allowable.
Looks like the edge of the pool is sixty-eight and six feet. So the, um, when you have an above-ground pool, do you have to have, um, a fence all the way around it, or is...
Yes.
So if you look, if the, if the edge of the pool is sixty-eight feet from the edge of the wetland, then how much, how close do you, you go to, uh, how far you're gonna disturb? Like, how far is the edge of where the fence is? And is it, is it gonna be, what are you gonna have? What's the distance from the edge of the pool to the fence?
The idea, when the way they drew it up was that the back portion of the fence, that went across the backyard where the actual water is, was going to, we're gonna keep it outside that twenty-five-foot buffer zone that Conservation had, had told us that we needed to stay away from. So it would be twenty-five, roughly, probably twenty-six feet in from the wetland flags, so if it's a total...
But remember, you, you, just because the, there's a conservation zone, we're, this is the watershed, and so there's more stringent rules that exist. So it's not clear to me, you know, again, and we're not trying to make your life difficult, uh, but how, see, because it feels like the plan's incomplete, because I can't tell, uh, what's gonna be the impervious surface on the, the lakeside, and then how much grading it's gonna have to be done on that side.
Well, the existing surface right now, it's all grass in the whole backyard, all the way out. There's no fence at all. It goes all the way out to the edge of the wetlands. It's, it's, um, my understanding from speaking with the engineer and when speaking with the pool company, that the, um, the front edge of the pool, they were looking to, to go down roughly, uh, two feet, four inches, I believe, was the, was the depth that they gave me, um, when they figured it all out. I had the pool company come out and mark it all out prior to the engineer coming out, and the engineer went off the pool company's,
With the placement, yeah.
Yeah, proposed placement of the pool.
Has Lisa reviewed the plans for conservation? Lisa Oguson, the consultant? I don't know about that. Um, if Lisa, I, I think this is...
Well, yeah, we don't want to have too, but if...
But if Lisa's re, I don't think Lisa's reviewing it, it doesn't sound like she already went, gone to Conservation, correct?
We've already gone, Conservation approved the NOI at the last meeting, but they left it open because we were waiting to hear back from Natural Heritage.
I, honestly, I think it, we don't have the tributary marked. I think it's, there's a significant grade here. There's at least a ten-foot grade over. It looks like twenty feet is my best guess, so, um, right here, looking at these lines I was looking at, and this is all gonna be new patio area. The, the offset was they were gonna put in crushed stone underneath the wood deck. I think it's, the whole reason we have the watershed special permit is to have a quick review, to make sure the lake's protected. And I don't know if we have enough information here, and if any of us are...
Yeah, I, again, I, I don't understand why he didn't, when doing his plans, didn't do, well, like a grading plan and the stuff. It, it almost looks like it's two-thirds of the way done. The retention wall is on the house side of the pool, is that right?
Correct, yeah. Because they were gonna, there's an existing lower patio, um, that was stoned, it's gonna stay, it's gonna, it's not getting any bigger. It's just gonna be redone with different stone.
Right next to the...
Which is right, right where it says proposed deck, right to the right of it. If I'm looking at it, that lower portion, um, is, is just gonna be, is existing, is gonna be replaced. Where it says proposed deck lower is the deck that we're proposing to build between the edge of the existing block patio into the front, up to the front edge of the pool.
And that's a wooden?
Wooden deck, correct.
And you told me how many feet of the ground?
What's happening?
What's underneath the wood?
Right now, or what will be?
What will be?
Well, there's gonna be a block when they, they, I would, the way they explained it to me was that because they were gonna have to take the grade down a little over two feet, that we were gonna build a block retaining wall to hold the land back, um, to the edge of the pool.
Basically, it'll be gravel or something underneath the deck.
Gravel, yeah.
Which, by the way, which house compared to where Officer Rand lives, which are...
Rand, we are two houses to, uh...
Rand?
Rand is, is higher, so I think he's either two or three houses closer to the farm than us on the same side.
Okay, okay.
Tell them about the landlord?
No, Dave Rand.
So...
So the erosion control is already in place? When we applied for, we did the, where it says proposed deck that comes off the side of the house and wraps around the back, we got a, um, Conservation gave us a small project permit to do that because only a hundred feet of that new deck was encroaching in their hundred-foot buffer, so they qualified for the small project permit. So we got all of that done, and it was explained to us when we were going through the process, because we talked to Conservation and, and Planning at the same time, that if Conservation was gonna approve it as a small project, the Planning's only stipulation would be that before any digging takes place for footings or anything like that, that they wanted the erosion control fully in place prior to. So before that even, that upper deck is up and in place now, but before any of that started, um, all the erosion control and everything was set and is already on the property.
Is the erosion control stuff on the other side of the pool?
It's, yeah, it goes all the way, it, it starts off the side of the house on both sides. It's that, it's that dotted line. It goes, it runs the side all the way down the whole side of the property, and it took, and it runs across the back. It's just, we kept it in just a foot of the, from the, um, from the wetlands flat, I mean, um, just with the outside of the twenty-five-foot mark for Conservation, and it runs across the whole back of the yard as well. So all of that has been in place.
And you're gonna actually do your fence, all the way to the edge of the property line?
Kind of where that's...
So you'll have actually a pretty big space?
Correct. It's all existing gra, grass now, all the way out to the wa, edge of the, where the water starts.
The, the fence would be kind of where that erosion is, like with the, because it goes up to the twenty-five, well, that's what we were told by Conservation, right?
Well, the way he drew, the way he drew the fence is it's gonna go right along the edge of the property on both sides. It's gonna stay, you see how the erosion control steps in and then it steps back out, because that was to incorporate two trees that we wanted to take out. That was part of the, um, application process, so they wanted the erosion control to encompass those two trees, and then it steps back in. The idea will be to have, not to have the fence step like that, because the property line is actually along where there's an existing fence that actually belongs to the neighbor. We were planning on running it, maybe a foot off of it, so it would run all the way down the side, across the back, and then, and up the other side. Um, I mean, my understanding was the, the only numbers that we were given as far as the, the fence and the setbacks and everything from the wetlands was the twenty-five-foot mark. I mean, if that's not correct, obviously, we'll, we'll do whatever we need to do.
Well, I mean, it's a little bit different. It's, uh, that, that's the wetland rules, but you, you come under the watershed permit rules, uh, which are a little bit different. I feel like it's not complete, and I don't want to have the applicant boil the ocean here, but I feel like we, there's stuff that we should know that we don't know.
I'd be okay with giving a waiver if they wanted to take the trees down now, but I think it, I really think it has to be reviewed by our consultant. It, it's too significant. I mean, you, you are creating a fairly large pervious pavement, uh, area.
Yeah.
And the offset underneath the deck, I don't know, you know, if we trusted every, every other engineer on the outside, we'd never need a consultant, you know?
Yeah.
His offset calculations aren't, we know those offset calculations aren't always the same when our consultant reviews.
I mean, the, the thing about it is if this, obviously is a non-conforming lot, that it's, it's sixteen thousand square feet in a district. It's a two-acre district today, so this house would not be built today. Um, but what, Pete, what's your pleasure?
I hate to boil the ocean, as you said, um, but I would like to have the opinion.
Just picture the house in the front.
Well, Rob?
Sorry, I just knocked that door.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's runoff, and there's, they're taking trees down, and it's changing the whole topography. I mean, unfortunately. It's talking about that it's gonna utilize drainage mitigation to collect and recharge. I mean, but none of that is discussed whether it's, you know, enough.
Dave?
I, I mean, it's, it's not a major thing, but boy, you're so close to everything that goes on back there, and, um...
I mean, she'll probably get done for you for the next meeting. She's usually pretty quick, you know, on her responses.
No, we don't want it to be her normal thing. It should be less than normal because it's relatively small. I mean, I'm, I'm sensitive to the occurrence of spending money because it's, you know, uh, we don't, it'd be one thing if it was a, um, you know, an enormously huge Olympic-sized swimming pool in a big house, but, you know...
Does she do different levels of review?
I mean, that's what we...
From my understanding, she's always coming under budget.
I mean, we ought to, I think, Christine, you see where we're going with this?
I wanted your board, like I said, this is my first watershed permit. This is unique. Um, this is also a single-family home. It's, it's a pool next to a house with a pool. If you would read, um, this is a letter from the engineer, written, um, you know, again, he's, he's lobbying on their behalf to not, um, have the extra additional expense of, of the engineer, and that's what they're asking for, so...
And maybe what he can do is, our engineer, maybe what you do is call her and find out what you can do inexpensively, uh, to give us some level of assurance that it's not gonna cost a lot of money.
I'll give you a suggestion. If you didn't run that fence all the way to the back of your property, you're gonna save something in fencing costs. And the way you have it with the black, I guess, cyclone fence, uh, I mean, you can pretty much see through that, so, you know, put a gate there that, you know, you can get through.
What do we do with the other side of the fence? Are we not allowed to do anything with it? Anything that falls on...
No, no, he's, no, he's, he's not saying you have to. That's cost-cutting. He's doing value engineering for you. So that's not, it's just a suggestion, but that's not something that we're requiring.
I mean, to run a fence all the way down like that, we're just trying to save, because we don't really have a front yard, so we're trying to save as much of the backyard as we have, as we can get.
Before I ask, you know, like I said, if we're gonna ask the engineer to review it, are there very specific questions that you guys have that you don't feel you have in this plan?
Well, usually, usually she will take their, that, that's what they're supposed to do, and she'll make comments on if she agrees with those items or not. I mean, there's very many times that the other engineer writ, makes, uh, calculations, and she disagrees with the calculations, so, um, and she'll have some offsetting comments, as you can see from the...
She'll take the plan into comments, and she'll just respond.
Like I said, I, I understand what the review process is for. I just don't know if you have particular concerns. Is it erosion? Is it, you know, so you're worried about everything?
It's a watershed, what falls on the pervious watershed, the drainage to run off, the, uh, mitigation, you know, the standard. I mean, she, I know, I know she's not gonna make a big deal out of something like that. It's not gonna be a fifty-page review.
Okay, so that's, yeah, and again, we're not trying to have you incur a lot of expense and lose a lot of time, but it, it is our water supply, and we, we try to be fair. We treat everybody exactly the same who comes in front of us, and what we'll do is we will work to make sure that if there's any cost associated with this review, it's as minimal as possible. So, but we, we really have to do go through it because there's some questions, so...
So just, just so I'm clear, is there anything that we need to be doing on our part, or you, you guys are gonna have...
Now, at this point, I think what it will be is that we will ask our engineer, we'll make it explicit, we want to do this as inexpensively as possible, and it's possible that our, uh, engineer may contact your engineer, and if it's okay to do that, you know, again, I, I know his clock ticks too, and we don't want you to incur a lot of money, but at some point, uh, she's gonna look at what he's done and maybe have a few questions for him, so...
Now, how does this affect us timeframe-wise? Because I know we have to come, come before the next meeting. Because I know we have to come, come before the next meeting.
Well, I would like if it's done our next meeting, uh, and, uh, but, you know, so it'll take a little bit of work. So, we'll be in two weeks, and we'll try to, you know, if we can get everything in, we'll vote it in two weeks. But we just have to be assured that it's not gonna create a problem.
I don't think you're needing it until July 7th.
Three weeks, it'll be three weeks.
Because June 30th would've been the third Tuesday, and we're not meeting.
Yeah, so it'll be three weeks, so...
But potentially, if everything goes well, we could get an approval on that, on, on that.
That's what we want to shoot for. That's what we're gonna shoot for, because we don't have any interest in holding the thing open.
Are you, are you, do you need, just curious, do you need to take the trees down before you do this work, I assume?
I don't need to.
Okay, there's no order of construction that you're planning on doing?
Yeah, isn't there?
Well, I mean, we want to take the trees down as part of the pro, I mean, we don't, there's no, there's no...
No, I know, but usually, usually that's three different contractors, maybe the pool company, the tree company, and the patio company. Is that the case?
Yes, it is.
Okay, usually, usually you want the tree company to take it down before they damage the new pool. So, I'm just saying that I would be fine if they wanted to start taking the, the trees, taking them down. I would be fine with, with letting them do that if you want to move forward with just the tree work, because you have the erosion control already in place.
Yeah, it's why you should identify which trees in the...
Yeah, those, there's the four on there.
There's four on, yeah.
Because Conservation still has to approve the tree work, taking it down, but I would, you know, I'd say...
Yeah, I take that, and I don't think we even need to vote on that part of the, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
If you don't want it, the tree company, they're gonna be telling you, they'll be, oh, December.
No, no, that, that would be helpful, because there's no, there's no reason we can't take them down now.
Right. Because Conservation's here, and that pot is in there pervying too, so that's minor.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we don't have to, it just stays open, so... So, where are we? Thank you, can I?
On your... Where do we go? General discussion items, did, planning board membership, John, did you have any luck? Have you...
No, they haven't called yet, and I'm gonna send a note to the town manager, uh, so I don't know.
His term expires June 30th.
Mine does too.
But you said you interviewed and met with them?
Yeah, but I didn't...
Get a letter back?
No.
Okay, so we'll communicate.
Maybe none of us will be here.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
But that'd be funny.
Still in question. Okay, well, that one's still in question then. Um, 116 Great Pond Road, um, this was the property that had some clearing and some replanting. And they had a violation, the Conservation Commission issued an enforcement order at...
This is the property right adjacent to Brooks School, I believe.
Yeah.
116 Great Pond.
The point of land.
Yeah.
Sticking out into the lake.
That's what we talked about, that the last time.
Right.
Yes, yes.
So, I checked in with Jennifer Hughes, your Conservation Agent, um, about your planting mitigation, and I asked her if they did two to one, replaced it at two times the amount that was removed. And she agreed that they had. That's what the Conservation Commission asked for. They also, you noticed, um, they did replace, and their planting plan had a lot of shrubs, not trees. And so, she and I briefly discussed whether or not she felt there was a decent ecological value replacement. And she said, in all honesty, that's what the commission wanted, and they did feel that there was a value in having some shrubbery with berries and fruits and flowering things for the other habitat in the area, um, and that they were native, um, so they did feel confident in the landscape plan. She'll be going out either later this week or early next week for a visit, and I'll go with her, um, to take a picture, but I think they're happy with it.
Mr. Harbormaster, you, uh...
I, I appreciate the follow-up, so thank you.
Can I go out with the, the vote? If you'd like, Peter, we could email you, and you can join us if it works with your schedule.
I have a question.
I've already been out there with Jennifer. Yeah.
Yeah, this relates, I think, more to Stevens Pond, but, you know, I, I still am not sure that there's nothing. Um, I was going in, I was coming back from town, uh, along that little road that runs along...
Yeah.
And, uh, there was a, an oil truck stopped there. Police guy, um, you know, being the flag, and they were taking oil out of, something out of the oil truck or out of the truck. Before that, I had seen on Stevens Pond some type of a boat with an outboard motor, bringing something down near that area.
Oh, it might be the treatment for the weed growth. This is Stevens Pond, not the lake you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, first off, I, I'm not involved with it, so I'm the wrong person to ask, but I've seen, but I have seen signage there.
Well, I was told to know, but you, you know, in a, in an abrupt way to move it, so I, this is gonna stop.
The signage refers to chemical treatment in the pond...
Okay.
For weed control, but I am not involved with it. I'm just refer, I'm just basing that based on the signage that I've seen there. So, back to the lake, they're satisfied.
I, I think they are. Like I said, her last, she's going on another visit either later this week or early next week, so I'll keep you posted, but I think they seem satisfied. I put the, uh, North Andover School Administrative Building, um, I know they had a ribbon cutting for opening today. Um, I reviewed the site yesterday or earlier this week, um, with the town engineer, and, um, you know, to grant the occupancy, we did have two, kind of, well, three outstanding issues on the site. Um, one of them, we, I really felt, um, that site should have a guardrail around that parking lot. Um, there's a 10-foot, 11-foot drop from the parking lot down to the drainage area.
I'm pretty sure we asked about that retaining wall, and I think...
And they, they agreed they'll, they'll consider putting that in. It's, there's nothing stopping a car really, other than like a two-inch curb from going kind of right over.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you would take even like the building inspector, it'd cut something like that, yeah.
So, anyway, so they, they agreed, um, to, to do that. Um, the drainage at the bottom, it looks like the drainage area could've benefited from a more solid berm to the adjacent property of the Housing Authority. So, the town engineer agreed that, again, to that condition, that, um, the school administration would, uh, kind of enforce that berm. And third, some of the trees that were on the site plan have not been planted yet. So, just in case you thought, I thought a tree was going in, it will be, um, but not yet, so... Um, but they wanted to get occupancy in the building, so we did grant that with those three outstanding conditions.
We're missing the open house.
You missed the open house tonight.
Tonight.
How did you say, too bad, we're working away?
And I believe you have minutes.
I'm sure all the school committee people are there, right?
Sure.
And the selectmen.
Yeah. August selectmen, yes, yes, so, okay, good. So, what else we got? Minutes?
My first comment is, we gotta get them back, the minutes down 10 pages is way too much.
Well, it's, it's gone to verbatim.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want a verbatim transcript of the, it's a transcript...
Was she writing them up?
Yeah, um, it's, it's a, it's a little bit too much. Um, on line 197, I think that should be a question mark. I think Laura wasn't asking if, um, I didn't, she, there was a subdivision in court. I think that was a question, wasn't it?
Right.
Because you were questioning it.
Yeah, filed, yeah.
There's a few name typos. If you want to just do a quick spell check, um, Correllis is, uh, on line 305 is something weird. But definitely probably should get this down to five pages.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah.
For your group, uh, do, transcripts, summative style, what is your preferred style?
Summary.
It takes, that takes a lot of Bonnie's time to do it that way, so...
Yeah.
The summary or the...
Would you prefer more of a summary or more of a transcript for your minutes? Because that takes a lot of time to do that.
To do what?
The transcript.
We don't, we do not want a transcript. That's not minutes. Minutes is supposed to be meeting and action and, you know, a brief discussion. Um, if we, you know, if we say, you know, we want a clarification, we want this in the minutes, you know, like we did with, uh, something that came up, we want it detailed, we'll tell you, you know?
The, the past one about the bond release on Sutton Street is a good example of something that was getting in-depth, but enough that we knew what we were saying, you know?
Oh, I agree. I, I think... Bonnie wasn't sure. She's, she's been working with the, you know, trying to figure out the new style. I, I'm just new to your board, and I thought, well, I want to hear what you have to say about your minutes and how you prefer to have them done, so...
That's fair.
In the past, too, uh, North Andover Camp used to have the ability to go back and look at things. And, I don't know, I, I assumed it would've lost that.
They still have it.
They do.
You get back to 2014?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not sure quite, how long do they archive?
Years.
Yeah.
Years?
Several years.
Because I clicked on, I clicked on 2013.
I see we have the X here.
Yeah. Is it BOD? We've changed the server in the past few months, so some of them might be offline, or we can fix that.
And then my second part of the minutes, um, is the selectmen put the meeting minutes online now? I think we should, because it'll make it easier when we have a question on minutes that...
They are.
They are.
The selectmen, the selectmen, no, not a planning board or not?
Yeah.
Most of them are, maybe not the last two, but, um, they are since when?
I went back to 2013.
Yeah, I went way back.
Yeah, you gotta go to the planning board and then up in small print at the top.
Yeah, no, I know, because I look at the selectmen ones. I have never seen the planning ones on it, because I know, um, okay. And then...
I've been reading them.
Yeah, and then the other thing is on, like, the minutes, I think, I don't know how the files are kept, but I would take 75 Great Pond Road and take the minutes for every meeting, everything that gets heard, to make sure a hard copy ends up in the file, so we don't have a Sutton Street getting a bond release by mistake. You know, um, because that, the minutes weren't obviously in their file, which said that they were supposed to do this, and if they were, if those minutes were in the file, we would've known that, hey, um, they didn't follow through what was told. So, if after the minutes are approved, we never see the approved minutes, they're unposted, so we can go that way.
That's a, that's a great idea.
Are you, are you wanting the section of the minutes related to the project in the project file? Is that what I'm getting?
Exactly, yeah, so 75, like this from 70, as soon as we approve it, 75, you know, you throw a copy of, I wouldn't pe, I would throw the whole minutes for everyone instead of trying to piece, cut and paste, you know? You can just take, take, you know, this is where it has 75 Great Pond Road, Red Gate, you know, so it's probably like six or seven items, just throw, make six copies, throw one copy in each of the files that was heard on that night. So, then it's right there, everything's all there in one package, so... Because there's a lot of times that the minutes do not, we, we amend their, this, what they submit to us, and that's the tracking. If it's not in the file, then it gets lost, and we've had stuff that's been approved, uh, with all the changes.
It does not exist that way electronically or in hard file now. We do the research prior to your meetings. Um, Bonnie and I have discussed this, uh, to try and add them to the files, because she and I are both new, and we're both searching back in, in...
Well, exactly, yeah.
A lot of files to find things that previously existed, so...
Before you sent it to us, I tried to find all the stuff on Sutton Street, and it involved reading every agenda and the minutes.
See, I just remember, I'm like, wait, I know they were here last summer. I knew they were here last summer, and then I started going through, right.
So, to that end, thank you. I made, sent an email this morning, and Bonnie dug out four documents, and that was done very quickly, and thank you.
Right, we're getting there. It, it doesn't exist that way now, but we've been discussing adding that.
But that's why I'll keep the files, you know, just every project should have every minute that was ever heard on that project in that file, you know?
Well, because it, from a litigation standpoint, God forbid, anything goes to litigation. That's what they're gonna come in and want, is the file.
Yeah, and you don't want them, you don't want to have to go through and search, you know, do, you know? Going back and trying to find, like, Red Gate, if you had to go back and find Red Gate, how many times that come before your board, John?
Many times.
500 times? I mean, and not quite, but that's probably been in front of the board 50?
15 or 20, yeah.
It's significant, yeah. So, to go back and do a search, if it was just after each minute, after hundred minutes approved, you throw a copy in.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
It's done, you know?
So, good, all right.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
John?
But I also, uh, refer back to a conversation we had a few months ago. Just briefly, maybe April-ish timeframe, just, um, briefly, we talked about, uh, a way to assess, you know, how, how is the watershed process going? And would it be possible to have DPW or otherwise come before the board? And, and, you know, what's the sort of trend of raw water sampling over the last 20 or 30 years? How are we trending? And I, I don't know if you recall, we, you know, we briefly talked about it.
Yeah, we did talk, that's actually getting some longer-term perspective to see if anything we've done...
Yeah, I mean, really, you know, what the sampling was last week doesn't tell us anything. But over 20 or 30 years could be informative.
I mean, one of the things, I don't know if you've ever read the, uh, like, the original watershed study that they did, really, when they created the, the Watershed Protection District, but it's actually an amazing amount of work they did, because they actually pinpointed which parts of the lake were in good shape, which parts of the lake were in bad shape, and, you know, and then they tied the remediation to that. This is actually sort of a different flavor of that, but it's an assessment of, you know, how well, is it getting better, or is it...
How are we doing?
Yeah, so, that's actually not a bad idea. We should, and it's, if the story's good, it's a good story to tell, I mean, so...
If it's bad, then we have to go back and look at it again.
Yeah.
If it's getting worse, then we're, we're missing.
Christine, have you had many conversations with Bruce?
I've met Bruce, and I met Gene and Tim, um, last week. I kind of sat down with them for about an hour to talk about, you know, how our jobs interrelate, so...
So, you might want to reach out to them and see if they have, I don't know what they have, but...
Um, actually, I just picked up a water quality report tonight down in your front hall by the clerk's office, um, to read that, so I picked up...
Yeah, this is a question of what they have over an extended period of time. I don't know if they grab it and keep all the...
They do. Water quality reports, I think, after...
I think those are after treatment.
After treatment, yeah, we want prior...
And we're talking about before treatment in the lake, yeah.
They have all those stats, and so does the state, so, um, I'll ask him, um, what he might have available for you over time. I'll look into that.
It could, I mean, it, it helps too, that, like, this one tonight, actually, interestingly enough, uh, the field, you know, where the athletic fields are, just, just slightly further down the street there, at the very edge of those fields, apparently, there are some of the most important, like, recharge areas, uh, that, you know, it, it's sort of like, you don't always think of that sort of thing, but some of that flow from the edge of the town farm into some of the downstream ponds are really important, and they have a very high water quality value. And so, sometimes knowing where land of better value is, is actually more important, because then that's, we would act accordingly, yes.
Well, back on that, don't forget, we never finished up our watershed notification to the people, you know?
Yeah.
We wanna, we had some drafts that we probably want to get finished up.
I, I think, I think we should. Just to give another brief, not sea story, but lake story, um, there was some additional clearcutting this spring, and Jennifer is aware of that.
Okay.
And part of my concern was that, you know, there was a clearcutting adjacent to Brooks last fall. There certainly appears to have been other clearcutting prior to that, but right across from that clearcutting adjacent to Brooks, right, you know, within visual sight is where the clearcutting that occurred this spring took place. And, you know, to, to what extent is this perhaps a case of, hey, they did it, nothing apparently happened, so why don't we do it?
So, so, yeah, so we should, could you check with Jennifer to see if she's looked at that, Christine?
I'll stick in. The other violations.
And so, the, you know, finishing that educational thing might...
We have to dig through the files. Bonnie, you might've just been on the tail end of Matt.
Who's Matthew? It's on my computer.
Okay, you have...
The postcards?
Yeah. It was only a mock-up at best, but there was some, some material that he had a bunch of different...
Good, good start.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And Christine, in addition to the, the 1116, there was an 80-salyway.
Yes, that one's still a work in progress.
Still a work in progress.
Yes.
And although one of the, the housekeeping item that we have to deal with was, um, the Bear Hill trees, that they came for the bond release, and we wouldn't release it because, um, they didn't do the landscaping on, remember, it was the company that goes through and goes for getting releases on it. It was like 15, 20 years old.
Yeah.
The tree, the, in the right-of-way, I think they have 17,000, we're holding up their money for the...
Bear Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very, very old.
Yeah, it's ancient. We have to figure out, we're holding a significant bond.
A Bear Hill bond?
Yeah, for the, for the landscape, for the trees along the right-of-way. Gene doesn't want them, which we probably agree with, but we wanted to see, you know, use the money, or make the...
Use the money for something.
Yeah, we want to see either...
So, this is the inside baseball, was this the, uh, this is just, this is even before my time. The, the question asked with Bear Hill, was it the Zach Alexanderian part of Bear Hill or the John Tuttle part of Bear Hill? And they asked Dick Rowan about that, because he, he lives at Bear Hill, so we should, we should ask him what we should do with the money. And they asked Dick Rowan about that, because he, he lives at Bear Hill, so we should, we should ask him what we should do with the money.
Get them in here, but, yeah, I want to, I'd like to clean up some of this old bond money. If they haven't done the work, then let's do the work and, you know, get rid of the money. You know, or you do the, do the work and there'll probably be nothing left if we do it.
Yeah.
You know? You know, but.
Two more questions for your board before we go. Two more topics. One of them, I've been told you don't tend to rotate your chairmanship, and usually one year, two years.
We will eventually, but.
Recommended, so.
Forever, but we haven't, and over the last few years, so, and we will, we will sometime in the not too distant future, but probably not this year.
No, we're not.
It's tracking.
Certainly like the way the ZPA doesn't change theirs, I guess, so.
It's sometimes it's healthy for a board to rotate it between members. It gets you all more involved, so.
I think we're all involved.
I think there's only one person who really knows what's going on, and that's John.
It's interesting when you take the hot seat, how much you learn real quick.
We've been in this about forever.
Yeah, just about, unfortunately, or unfortunately is the case maybe.
The man reads everything.
Last elected member of the planning board, John, so.
Okay, another question. Today procedurally, when I send out emails, I want to talk about open meeting law briefly, because when I send out, or Bonnie sends out an email to the group, it's a quorum, it's a communication of a quorum of matters that are before your board. If you would like additional information or have questions about stuff that I've sent, and you say, you know what, I'm still looking for something else on that site, which many of you did, the best way to do that, to ensure you're not violating open meeting law, is to set up a little email that's to myself and to Bonnie. Christine and Bonnie, planning board information, or just planning board, and then always use that one. That way, you're just communicating with staff, and none of, if you hit reply, it replies to the quorum, and then you can trip yourself up if, if somebody responds, that's the, that's the difficult thing. So again, Laura, you did it correctly today. You sent one to myself and Bonnie, said, I'm looking for this, this and this, and then we quickly sent it back out to everybody, so.
I didn't though, because I, I felt like I had to ask for it to be sent to everybody. I didn't know if that was really gonna be the plan.
No, we were just still looking. Honestly.
No, but I had given it to you, so there wasn't anything to look for. So I felt like, I didn't feel like if it's gonna go to everybody, that's why I checked back in.
We did, we.
There were minus a couple of staff today at the desk.
I think they all know the open meeting laws, and asking for documents, like Laura, last, two meetings ago, replied to all, saying we didn't get a minutes, you know, or the package number two. I don't think, there is no problem replying to all, and just so everybody knows, I'm the one who replied to all and asked for the sudden plans, and I was told that I cannot reply to all. It's, it's.
Another one did too, that's what I'm saying, it's just easier and safer to do it the other way.
Well, it's not safer if we, if we ask, you don't want, you don't need five duplicate requests from five different people for the same documents. It's not a violation of the open meeting law. I did remark on that, I think, and I got attorney out, the review with that. Asking for a document is not a violation, so if you guys prefer that, then you can state that, but don't tell us it's a violation.
Well, I just, I don't want it to become a discussion, that's all, because sometimes it quickly does.
We've all signed the open meeting laws.
So that was one question, and debriefing before and after meetings, as long as, again, last time I left the meeting room, and it just will make sure that the meetings break up, so that, again, I had.
I think, I think we should go off the.
I, yeah, that's fine too.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah?
Yeah, second.
Second. All in favor?